It sure did. And we're a minute early, so just talk for another thirty seconds and then we'll get started. All right, welcome everyone. Glad to have you in our regular March meeting. We'll start off with the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silent prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have a number of guests here tonight. First of all, we have some individuals, some students from youth council. If they could stand up. Very good. And what I'm gonna ask is your name, and tell me what school you're at, and something interesting that you guys are doing, as well as any guests we have that may be also interested in joining Youth Council. And could you state your name and what class you're in? Well, thank you for coming and thanks for bringing others that might want to join in. And yes, sir. Okay, very good. Anne? Oh, excellent. Very good. We also have some scout. Oh, we have two others over here. Please state your name, your school, and something you've really learned in Youth Council. And what have you learned? Very good. Well, again, thanks for all of you being here. And anytime you have any questions, feel free to give us a call. We'd like to talk to you. Thank you again. Understand we have some scouts here, is that right? Yes, could you stand, please? Here we go. Welcome for being here today. And tell us, tell me why you're here and what you'd like to learn while you're here.
So my name is Kevin Payne. I am here working on a merit badge.
Thank you.
So my name is Casey Payne, and I also work on a merit badge for communications. And as I've already told, I'm going to retire.
Well, glad, glad to have you here. Welcome. Thank you. We also have Chairman Steve Morris from Cabarrus County. Thank you for being here. And trying to see if anyone else that we'd like to, we're gonna talk about retiring, retire, be here in a minute. So we'll move on to approval of minutes from January twenty, twenty to twenty-fourth, February seventh, and February ninth.
Mayor, I move that we approve those minutes.
On second. If a motion is second or in favor, raise your hand. Thank you. Well, that moves us to presentations, retirement plaque for Captain Rick Gillian for twenty-nine years of service with the City of Concord Fire Department. So let me just read this before I get Rick to come up here. Rick Gillian started his fire service career with the city on March first, nineteen ninety-four. He has been a dedicated member of the organization, holding the ranks of firefighter, firefighter two, senior firefighter, fire specialist, and fire captain. Captain Gillian has served in numerous committees within this department, including apparatus wellness, hazmat, recruitment, honor guard, and strategic planning committee. Captain Gillian has received multiple certifications during his career and used his skills to teach new firefighters. Captain Gillian's last assignment was letter eleven, assigned to protect the western portion of the city, and has done so since he opened the station in two thousand and sixteen. So Rick, can you come forward? I have a plaque for you. But Rick, I just want to congratulate you for your work you've done in the City of Concord for the last twenty-nine years. Rick and I also run from those. We, we run different races together. And whenever I needed some, you were a relay team. I need somebody fast. This is the guy that you gotta get. Rick, we're just, we hate to lose you. But I understand that you have other things planned now. Could you go in there a little bit?
Monday, Mark said I look like work for the state for, for the state fireworks office as instructor. Mayor is the state, Murphy de Manio. So I've been a lot of traveling here soon, so.
So those are all skills you learned?
Exactly. So everything I've learned, yeah, everything that's, give the city of Concord credit, the fire department credit for my next adventure.
I guess, great. I'm glad to see you staying within your profession.
Oh, yes, yes.
And who do you have here today?
I have my wife Jill. My mother, Maynell, Ros and Sam. Chief Goodman, Division Chief Goodman, Chief Williams. Lieutenant Brett Taylor and his wife Amy.
I would have liked them to all come up here. I'd like to get a shot all together. So if we could do that, that'd be wonderful. Where do you want us?
If you guys can, it's probably kind of like a half circle here. I'll put you two in the middle.
Okay.
So Mayor, you guys, if you can, right here.
Rick, enjoy that next phase of your life. We'll see you soon. Okay, next we're gonna move to a presentation proclamation recognizing month of March is Women's History Month for the City of Concord. I want to go ahead and read this and have it entered into the record. Whereas women in every race, class, and ethnic background have made significant contributions, an historic contribution to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. Whereas this year's theme, celebrating women who tell their own stories, established by the National Women's History Alliance, honors women who've been devoted their lives, who've devoted their lives into now introducing arts and news and pursuing truth and reflecting society. Whereas women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of our life and the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force, working inside and outside of the home, and the volunteer labor force. And whereas women, women of every race, class, ethnic background, served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement, and have served our country graciously in the military. Whereas women have been leaders, not only securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolition movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which created a more fair and just society for all. Now therefore, I, William C. Dush, Mayor of the City of Concord, hereby declare that March twenty twenty-three is Women's History Month in the City of Concord, and urge all citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. So, thank you.
Mayor, can we just ask all the women in the audience in the diocese stand?
I think we can. Thank you for all you do. And as I just read, without you, this would be a much different place. It would not be as great as it is. So thank you all. We're gonna move on to, yep, departmental reports. We decided at the work session on Tuesday that we were going to add an update each apartment of what's going on with the downtown streetscape plan. So with that said, I'll pass it over to the.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council staff. Several staff members are gonna come up before council this evening and provide an update on what's going on in downtown. A lot of construction, a lot of projects. And so we're gonna try to keep council up to date with what's happening. So Steve, if you would.
Yes, sir. Mayor, Members Council, Mr. Payne, Ms. Kocinski. Yes, in the past two weeks, there has been a flurry of activity. It's been well noted. And we want to give you an update on everything that we have to keep the public informed, to help the businesses, the coordination efforts. So we want to update you on all that. So I'm just gonna start refresher. We started the streetscape some time ago on Market Street. It started and stopped, started and stopped. The net result is we're two hundred and seventy days behind on Market Street. But then, whenever it started back, January twenty-fifth, hit Barbrick Street, they took off. Five weeks ahead, which is great, hit Union Street. So once we hit Union Street, then that's whenever, it was, it was much quicker. We adapted, and we've been working very diligently in the past two weeks to come up with the efforts that we're gonna show you tonight. So no presentation would be, would not be complete without the visuals reminding the big picture. And that's something that we want to continue to, to keep everybody's eye on the ball. Of course, nighttime, looking through. These are drone pictures from yesterday with the water line, sixteen-inch water line on Union Street in front of not just Frank's in that area. Think yesterday alone, they, they covered over a hundred foot of the sixteen-inch line. There's two jewel eight-inch lines. They're inadequate. That's what the sixteen-inch line is replacing. This is a shot looking up, or looking down Barbrick Street to the flats. The flats are scheduled to start moving in in May, so they are progressing very well. This is a good aerial showing all three, the loss, the flats, and the rise. And also, want to bring your attention to the Morris Building. Because this kind of ties in with everything that you know and we know, and we've been talking about. Not only is the streetscape being done to, to enliven downtown, to help business, to help prosperity, but it's also to support the growth that has been going and will be going. Yesterday, I was talking to the owner of the Morris Building, and he said, I can't wait till that sixteen-inch line is installed. He said, you know why? I said, I got a feeling. He said, that will eliminate the need for a fire pump. That's fifty thousand dollars. It's a historic building. You put a fire pump in a historic building, it takes a lot of room, and you have to monitor it forever. So the sixteen-inch line, the hydraulic counts are good enough, they no longer has to do it. That's the reason we're burying, we're upgrading the infrastructure. There's a lot of focus on the surface, but now it's the infrastructure. And that was, that was a really good story, I thought, that would lead up to tonight. I want to turn it over to Kaylee, and then Kaylee will turn it over to Paige to go over everything we got going on.
Okay, so going into a little bit more detail on the construction update, more on the ground. As Steve mentioned, they worked on the sixteen-inch water main from Barbrick to Corbin. And as of just a few hours ago, we got the update that they laid two hundred and fourteen linear feet of pipe and nine taps. And the picture you see on the bottom left is one of those taps. So those will service the businesses between Barbrick and Corbin. Next up, tomorrow, they're gonna work on a two-inch service for a fire hydrant at Corbin. And then early next week, they'll do something similar for a fire hydrant by Barbrick. And once they get those two done, they'll work on the water main installation from Barbrick towards the mid-block. So that's kind of the near future. And then later in the month, that's when they will actually make that new water line live, get water in it, disinfect it, test it, and then they'll start adding those services to the businesses. That will impact a little bit of the pedestrian movement in downtown. And we'll, as we get closer and know more about the details, we'll be sure to inform the businesses. And the contractor will work with them to minimize the impact. So when the actual service gets switched over to the new water line, making sure that's not occurring during business hours, trying to do that work before or after. Getting into the construction sequence, I need to make it very clear that this is a floating schedule. This is what we know today. It can change and shift. But as far as how the construction will move ahead on Union Street, this is what we expect currently. So as Steve mentioned, work moved pretty quickly on Barbrick, five and a half weeks ahead of schedule that we were expecting to get to Union Street. But it's also good because, as you guys know, the courthouse expansion is nearing completion. But once they're done with the addition, they are gonna go back to the current nineteen seventy-five courthouse and renovate it. That will impact Union Street. So getting ahead of them for the water line and storm drain work is a good thing. We're hoping to get out of their way by mid-May when they start to put their work zone out on Union Street there. So also looking at the streetscape work in spring of twenty twenty-three for Barbrick. Moving forward, they will go from the mid-block to Cabarrus Avenue, looking at summer twenty twenty-three for that work. Again, water line, storm drain work, and then reaching Cabarrus. We've been told that they will leave Cabarrus open to through traffic, but it will be controlled. You know, the flaggers and people controlling the traffic through there while they work on that intersection. Then they will move their way from Cabarrus to Kalani late summer. And that's again on water line and storm drain work. As you get more closer to Kalani, the storm drain gets smaller, and there's a little bit less of that just because of the slope. So the next phase, they'll come back down to the area between Cabarrus and Barbrick. And that will be when we really see the grading work, the road torn up, kind of like you see on Barbrick right now, and the full, you know, sidewalk work. I still have utilities because there is electrical fiber, some of those utilities that are closer to the surface that'll be worked on at that time. And then it's similar to the previous phase, kind of working our way north toward Kalani, winter of twenty-three, twenty-four at Cabarrus, and then winter, early spring, twenty-four from Cabarrus to Kalani. And that's intentional because then we come back down by the courthouse where, again, they will still be renovating that building. We're trying to push that work out towards the end of the project so that they can get as far along as possible before we do the streetscape updates between Barbrick and Corbin. Then we'll work in the intersection at Corbin. And once you get beyond Corbin, it's mostly surface level, not as much work. But that will be towards the end of the project. And the final phase is kind of those finishing touches. So landscaping, paving the road, striping the road, installing furnishings, all of those items. As we get closer to the end of the project, we'll know more about how they plan to phase out that work. Some of the modifications that we made to Union Street after the road was closed to through traffic, they added a left turn lane from Union Street North to Cabarrus and took down the no-left-turn-lane sign. Transportation also assisted with adding two parallel parking spaces. We did consider angled and reverse angled parking. We kind of sketched it out, gave it to transportation. They looked through it and just determined it wasn't feasible, given the constraints of the space that we have, to, you know, maneuver around that area and leave it open for emergency vehicles and construction traffic. So they put the two spaces in, those have been installed. And then we also adjusted a little bit of the temporary lighting. They had a couple extra poles that were installed, and we're looking to add a spotlight kind of near the, the Market Street passageway that will take advantage of conduit that's already in place. Don't have an exact timeframe for that, but we're working on it to add some light there. Website updates. So we had a meeting on January thirtieth that we attended with some of the merchants. It was open to anyone that wanted to attend at the Cabarrus Center, and they brought up a good point about parking. We already had a parking page on the website, but they asked if we could add it to the homepage, something that was more obvious. So this button at the top of the homepage has been added, and that takes you directly to the parking map, which we keep pretty frequently updated every month or as needed, if, you know, like when Union Street closed to through traffic. And that's downloadable. You can click on it, and it'll take you to a PDF. There's also hyperlinks toward the end of the page that direct you to a Google Maps for each of the parking lots and parking decks, and it has all of the details on hours and availability there. We also made a change that's not as noticeable, but we added a streetscape tab instead of having it hidden under projects. It's now got its own tab. You can find out some of the history of the project. But most importantly, you can now find out construction updates. And if you go to the concorddowntown.com/streetscape site, you can also get to the construction updates using this button here. And that takes you to kind of a blog-style format page where we will share the same things you're seeing on social media, but also maybe go into more details about what's happening in construction, not just with the streetscape, but with other projects in downtown. Construction signage, a couple of these A-frames were put up recently. This is a pretty simple design that we can update and have more signs printed as needed, but they're adaptable. So as the fencing moves down the street, we can kind of move the signs with it and help people to find their way. Also working on construction banners. So this is kind of been my job for the week is designing these, mocking them up. This is a photoshopped image of what it, what it will look like when installed. These are gates at both ends, so during the day, a lot of the times, these are open. But you'll still be able to read, as you see on the kind of left side, we're open, come on in, y'all. Showing the renderings really large and, and adding that to both gates. I only show the one here, but it'll also be on the south gate that's currently near Corbin Avenue. The other banners, these were kind of pretty popular when we did the window graphics on the city hall, Old City Hall. People liked looking at them, and there was a timeline and showed the history of downtown. And so we've expanded upon that. This will be forty-eight feet long, so it's quite large. And it going from the history into that image that Steve showed to start with, with what the street will look like and some of the renderings there. Again, this is a Photoshop mock-up of what that could look like when installed. We plan on doing one on either side to start. Also working on doing a construction sequence. That one's a little tricky, but we're gonna try and figure out how we can kind of put those three sides I showed you together, showing the sequence of construction and what to expect. And then a selfie wall, so adding some color, you know, support local, building off of our logo in the streetscape. Again, one on either side of the fencing to get us started, but we also have an idea for a competition. So we are still figuring out the details, but making a competition for the residents to submit artwork that we would then order to be installed as construction fencing, allowing the public to vote, prize for downtown dollars, and kind of figuring out how to get the public involved in that. And finally, for my piece is an idea for a construction signage, so wayfinding walk downtown Concord signage. This is based off the center, the mid-block on Union Street. So two-minute walk, five-minute walk, ten-minute walk, showing how close everything is in downtown, how easy it is to get downtown. There's a program called Walk Your City that this is kind of based off of. And you can see some examples here of what that could look like. And these are just small signs, temporarily attached to light poles and whatnot around town to encourage people to come to the center of town. And with that, I'm gonna pass it over to Paige.
So with all of that information, it is now our job to get that information out to our merchants and to our public. So we have meetings weekly, that we have calls with the engineers and contractors and, and our teams, our boots on the ground. so that we can understand what they're telling us and then figure out how to get that information into layman's terms and out to our, our merchants. We also have monthly meetings with those contractors as well. So once we get that information, we're able to figure out which is the appropriate method to disseminate that to the particular audiences. We do have a monthly merchant letter that I get out to our merchants and property owners every month and that has the real important information that they need to know. Of course, things we know come up and change quickly. So in addition to that, as needed, simple emails are sent out to those business owners as well as soon as we have information that we need to get to them. Of course, our newsletters go out regularly and those go to all of our subscribers, so they're merchants, but there are also residents and just people who are interested in getting information. So getting that information to them, letting them know how to, how to park when they come down here, how to plan for their visit, that we are in fact open. Social media posts, working with our Public Affairs Department to make sure that we are all on the same page with that information that goes out. And then, of course, when we have very important information and especially if it impacts particular businesses and especially if it is a quick turnaround, getting out boots on the ground and visiting those businesses in person to let them know, hey, the sequence has changed, it's not what we thought it was going to be and what we've communicated before. I don't have all the details yet, but I want you to know that some, that I'll be getting that to you and that this change is happening. And of course, looking at doing some things to get this information also to our departments within the city. We have a lot of people who go out into Concord during the day, whether it's to get coffee or have lunch, and making sure that they know what's going on within our own walls here is important. Another avenue that we are, that we have just taken is paid advertising. Cabarrus Weekly is a new local publication. That, that publication is a weekly newsletter. They have fifteen, over fifteen hundred subscribers already. So getting that information out there to beyond just our downtown Concord newsletter readers and making sure that, that the public throughout Cabarrus County knows what's going on. So featuring that through that paid advertising in the newsletter, their website, as well as their social media posts, and looking at ways to do giveaways for downtown dollars to those subscribers to get people who are already visiting downtown back and spending more money with our businesses. And of course, trying to find creative ways to utilize the, the existence of an open street. You know, that, we, we have an opportunity here and so working to find ways where, once a month, we can have a single musician out playing his guitar at the end, right before the construction starts, bringing tables and chairs once a month, you know, having people be able to gather in that space. It's already open, let's utilize it and let's bring people downtown. And then, of course, Art Walk is still on. We have worked with the Arts Council to partner with them on this event. And we're still going to utilize the space that we have. And then, of course, generate people down past the construction to the other businesses that are still there. The construction doesn't mean that the business stops there, so getting those people down those sidewalks. But we are excited to have Art Walk. We will be utilizing the open portion of Union Street as well as the open portion of Church Street, or excuse me, of Cabarrus Avenue up to Church Street that we don't often utilize all of. So that will allow us to really still have that event and get people in downtown and let them know that we're still open for business and come on in. And that concludes our presentation and we'd like to turn it over for questions or comments.
Well, thank you very much for all the work you're doing with this area because it's, it's moving so fast. A lot of information has to get out. Council, have any questions, comments?
I have a comment, Mayor.
Go ahead.
As, as somebody who, who lives two blocks from downtown and works downtown and has an office building downtown, you know, and also this is part of my district, you know, I've gotten more than a few emails and phone calls, but I just wanted to tell you, Paige and Kellye and Steve, y'all have been, and Lloyd, I mean, I've seen y'all out there, like you said, boots on the ground and that's, I think, you're not going to make everybody happy. And, but I just want you to know that you're showing all the ideas you've come up with. I mean, it's, it's, it's very, I don't know a lot of cities that would do a lot of things that we're doing for, for people. And I really, it's an inconvenience right now, but I think people are really going to pay off. And I think it shows our staff really cares and I thank y'all for all the extra work y'all have done. Y'all have really done a good job of that and been very responsive. So I really want to thank y'all so much. And this is extra, extra for y'all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments, folks? All right. So e- each month, we'll be getting an update as we have our meeting. We appreciate that and all the work you're doing. Okay, we're moving to recognition of persons requesting to be heard. Before I've, I've got three individuals signed up. If you haven't, you can still speak, we'll have an opportunity to, but I'm going to read this statement. Our time to recognize persons to be heard on the agenda is an opportunity to hear from anyone wishing to speak. This is time for listening for counsel. The subject will be noted and if required action or request, the city manager will note as such and provide steps for any required response or after action. Please leave your contact details with the city clerk to facilitate communications. So with that, I have three individuals signed up. Charles Hodge, will you come up? When you have three, three minutes, sir. Thank you for being here.
Thanks for having me. Good evening. I passed out a letter earlier, I think, I think you all have a copy. Basically, I, I made a mistake and I'm here to ask you all for help fixing it. My name's Charles Hodge, I'm a civil engineer and I'm working on the Naaman Hotels project at John Q Hammond's Boulevard for a hundred and eighty-four room hotel that will be home to True Hotel. You all reviewed this project back in September and allocated wastewater flow to it. And it was revealed during the project review that I made a mistake in my calculations and we need another forty-eight hundred and forty gallons in order to accommodate the project as it's envisioned. And so later on this month, I believe, you'll see that come up on your agenda at your second work session. And I just wanted to stress that the project hasn't grown, it is the same project. This is just a calculation error on my part and I hope you'll be able to help me out and get this straightened out. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Kyle M. Howt? Thank, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, appreciate your time this evening. I'm Kyle Hoyt, I'm here with and for my client, Old Dominion Freight Line. We have Josh Barwick, Director of Real Estate and Construction here as well. Wanted to share some information about our project. We're trying to move forward at the grounds of Concord and a sewer allocation request that you will make a decision on next Thursday. Old Dominion Freight Line, I think, I think we get mixed up in the warehousing distribution conversation. Old Dominion Freight Line is not that. Old Dominion Freight Line is a leader in the less-than-truckload freight company or less-than-truckload freight industry. You're looking at a picture before you of a crossstop facility similar to the one we are proposing to construct out at the grounds of Concord. This is our site plan for the let, for the facility. We are special use with special conditions in the I-two zoning. We've gone before DRC for our initial hearing, we're confident we can meet those requirements, including full screening of all loading areas from public rights of way. We back up to George Lyle, we face a new portion of Newtown Way that's to be extended. We'll be accommodating that screening through a variety of preserving existing vegetation, birmingham landscaping. We hope to have an opportunity to work with staff to create a great project for the city, but we need sewer. I think people get common misconceptions in freight. They're not, they're not familiar with, with the type of product we're trying to put forward. Old Dominion as a leader, we can set the standard. These, these are the types of finish, Class A office space, we want to provide our employees and create a place that everybody can be proud to work in. We are only asking for a thousand gallons per day. We think that's a tremendous value, that's equivalent to eight, eight bedrooms. For a thousand gallons per day, we will be, we are prepared to make an investment of eighteen to nineteen million dollars to build the facility. It will create a hundred new jobs. Most will be sourced locally, well-paying, average hourly wages, twenty-five to thirty dollars an hour. Median salary positions, eighty thousand dollars a year. It is a Class A office space, we want to create a great place for people to work. We're supporting local and interstate commerce. They serve companies like Red Bull, who is located at the grounds of Concord. Despite us being in the freight industry, we are a minimal truck and traffic trip generator. We do think we'll be able to enhance that park and deliver us a great, great development for the city. And we are extending public infrastructure as part of that project. So Newtown Way will be extended with the associated infrastructure and dedicated over to the city. So I think that completes my three minutes.
Perfect timing.
I appreciate it. Thank you for your time tonight. I did offer my contact information to Councilmember Stocks. If anybody wants any more information on this project, feel free to reach out to me directly.
Thank you very much and great timing.
Yeah, thank you.
Bob Guariti?
Good evening. The topic I was interested in has been continued from this meeting to a future meeting, so I'll defer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here. Anyone else would like to speak tonight? There's no one else here to speak, so we'll move on to our public hearings. First one is conduct a public hearing pursuant of North Carolina General Statute one fifty-eight dash seven dot one to consider granting a one-year eighty-five percent tax-based economic development. Okay, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved, Mayor.
Motion second, all in favor, raise your hand. Thank you. All right. I have no one here signed up to speak. Is there anyone who would like to speak in regards to this item, for or against? There is no one wishing to speak, so motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second, all in favor, raise your hand. Thank you very much. Back to council for recommendation.
Mayor, I bet we accept the proposal and extend the one-year eighty-five percent tax-based initiative to Hendrick Otavault.
I second.
We have a motion in second, ready to vote, all in favor, raise your hand. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, second item, conduct a public hearing, consider adopting ordinance, amending Article Eight, Table Eight dot one dot eight. Is there a motion to open the public hearing? A motion and a second, ready to vote, all in favor, raise your hand. Thank you. All right, I have no one signed up for, against this, is anyone who would like to speak in regards to this item? There is no one wishing to speak, is a motion to close the public hearing. And a motion is second, ready to vote, all in favor, raise your hand. All right, thank you very much. Back to county council for recommendation or other. Yes, Chancellor?
I would, I just, as you all know, because we spent a weekend together, most of the people out there don't know, I am a processor, so I appreciate staff when we get this on Friday and then the report, Kevin was super helpful. So I was on, I don't know, one day this week, it was after the presentations, I guess it was Wednesday, was showing a property up in, not in the city of Concord, okay? And there was a, there was a house here, there was an empty lot and there was another house. We were in a subdivision that did not have an HOA. And the gentleman asked me about the lot, the empty lot. And I said, well, actually, it's owned by the individual that owns the house, was purchased in the early, late two thousands or in the two thousand era when sometimes developers were giving lots away because two thousand nine, two thousand eight wasn't the best times. And so he said, what could they build on that lot? And I said, well, we'd have to go to the county, see what the regulations are and all that. And so we kind of, and so as I drove away, I thought, huh. We had just talked about, you know, this piece of it and, and so it just, I guess it stirred in me. I would like, I love this project, by the way. I love the, the diversity of housing and I would like to propose that we take another month. I would like to have that, if, if it's the will of the council, to just kind of let this marinate a little bit to make sure there's not some unintended consequences that we might, could potentially put in the ordinance. Unfortunately, I'd love to tell you what that might be and I don't have the answer to that. And I know sometimes we go, and we can certainly always draw things back. With this being a new ordinance, I would just like to propose as a consideration to say, let's take a month to kind of marinate on a little bit. There's no other information that I need personally, Lloyd, from a staff perspective. I just need a little bit more processing time, so that's a, just my opinion on that.
And Mayor, I would support that.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I love what I'm seeing here and I, I'm in agreement. I just want some more time just to look. I'm not asking you for any more information, but we're not going to come back and say, but we want you to do this, this and this in a month. That's not it, we're just trying to get completely clear of where we are. My only question that I have is do we want to start with RV and RC or do we want to start with this list?
If I'm amaze with, with that, I think this, I'm glad that Jennifer did say that and that's kind of what I was getting at Tuesday. I'm, I'm concerned a little bit about the teardown situation. The biggest concern that I have and that I brought up a little bit on Tuesday is that the characteristics of neighborhoods could be compromised. And I think that, you know, I talked to Kevin a little bit today about this and I like, I think all of you do like the idea of having the ability to have some tiny housing projects within the community, but I think there needs to be a layer of approval. Maybe, and I asked Kevin, I don't know the terminology in, in your planning world exactly, but I know, you know, a special zoning region, but I think you mentioned something like an overlay type situation where, where you would have to have it approved and, and posted for neighbors to be able to digest because, you know, I think we talked Tuesday too about how, oh, well, there's homeowners associations. Well, a lot of the older parts of the city don't have HOAs and we pretty much are the HOA. So we have to be real careful about the unintended consequences and I just, I'm, I'm very leery about this unless we have a little bit more.
So, so Brian can answer your question.
But I think overlay would be good, but I'm, I'm, yeah.
So, so are you asking for staff to do something?
Absolutely, yeah.
I mean, so, so let's be clear.
Yeah, I'm just wanting to expound on that a little bit and just say a little bit more about how. Go ahead, sorry.
No, no, go, go ahead, finish.
I, I would suggest since it is getting in discussion that maybe we move this and add it to the second work session. I think we have some time, if Lloyd could, could have the proper planning staff there and that would give us some time to chew through these questions, just an idea.
Mayor, I've got just one thing, as, as, because we started looking at this, I started researching this a little bit. It's obviously a trend that's coming up, but it's going to be not a trend, it'll be a fact when it's all said and done. This industry, at least for the tiny house, what I'm, what they're saying is in the next four years is going to increase by three point five billion dollars in construction and sales. One of the issues I think that I have is the type of tiny home we're talking about. I mean, it's not going to be on wheels per se, we know that's not going to happen. But what are, I think, one of, some of the examples of frontages and, and what we could do with these, what they're going to look like, I think is a big issue. I think that's what you're saying, a little bit about infill within cities and then changing a scope or look of a neighborhood. You want to make sure that blends in. And so I think we could, at that meeting that we've now just talked about, we could have some, I guess, pictures of, examples of what we might be, I know you had it the other night and it was real quick like that, but maybe some more of that kind of thing.
Terry, I think in two weeks, we could have these discussions and then that would give staff two weeks, Lloyd, to come back in April with some response. I don't think we're looking for anything in the next two weeks or anything after work session, just a little bit more.
And there's not even urgency here. I mean, it's not like somebody's waiting to do a project, so we can take our time on this. I think it was just a staff idea that maybe some deals had gone awry or something because of that.
Yeah, I think staff's had a lot of conversation with developers and interested parties and right now, it's just not possible in the way that staff presented it on Tuesday. So, yeah, I think it's fine to table the matter and discuss it whenever council wants to. My only ask of council would be if there are specific ask that you want staff to come back with something different than what was presented, just let us know so that we can come back and not waste your time at the next meeting by saying, well, let's talk about it again. Just let me know what exactly you want from staff and we'll make sure that happens.
I would say, my personal opinion is this is a product that we desperately need. We can't address all of our housing issues. We just don't have enough arrows in the quill to address it and this is another one, so we've got to figure it out. But if that needs two weeks or four weeks or whatever, I'm fine with that, so I understand. But I'm one hundred percent behind getting this product available in Concord in the right place.
Yeah, and I agree, and I just think it, it needs. Yeah, and I agree, and I just think it, it needs to have a special zoning so that there's notification. And I just want to really protect some of these older neighborhoods that have, you know, larger lots, but maybe a little mealhouse sitting on it, and, you know, it just could change the characteristics of a neighborhood, so.
So we are going to have this as in our second work session in March.
So Valerie, could, do we, do we need a motion to table?
Yeah, so, so we're going to need a motion, but we also, I'm going to have it added to the.
We can, I mean, we can also talk about that from, yeah, send you the email or whatever it might be, yeah. So what would the motion be?
I'm clear. You want to discuss in two weeks at the work session, and then put it back on as an action item for the April?
It, it could possibly be that, but I would say then we may end up tabling it again. That may not be enough time, so.
Okay, so the, the point, the reason that we, that we table it to a meeting certain is so that the meeting, the hearing doesn't have to be advertised, and the city incur those costs again.
Which is why I don't think that we should put it on April, but how would we make the motion to just say, table it until we get further clarification until the, just table period? Okay, so I'd just like to make that motion, that we table this.
Table, table it to a future date?
To a future date not determined at this point, until we get a clarity.
I'll second that, Mayor.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Okay, council ready to vote? All in favor, raise your hand. All right, so that's, that sounds good. All right, again, staff, we really appreciate the work you've been doing with this. This is something that's very high on our list of future items, but we just want to make sure we understand how we're moving forward. All right. Conduct the, number three, conduct a public hearing for the case ZCD 2022. Counsel, let's have a motion to open the public hearing. Motion is second, ready to vote? All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you. I have one individual, William Niblock, signed up to speak. Anyone else after Wade, William, just let me know. Good evening.
Good evening. William Niblock, I live at 4,000 Popper Tent Road. My company, Niblock Homes, is the developer of the Cumberland neighborhood, and we're well underway in Cumberland. We've had, it was originally approved as a 120-lot, age-restricted neighborhood. There are about 20 homes under construction. I think we've had 12 or 13 sales. The homes are priced in the 500s and $600,000 range. And so we're very pleased with how the neighborhood has started out. After we purchased the property and began development, several properties on Eva Drive came on the market to two houses, which happened to sit on either side of our second entrance, which is not yet installed, came on the market. We purchased one and had a investor purchase another on our, on our behalf. And then another piece of property behind us that actually fronts on to Popper Tent Road that was owned by Tim Talent, has been on the market for years. That property's got some real problems in developing it, and the fact that there's a big creek that goes right through the middle of it, and it wasn't feasible to develop it the way he had originally, I think, intended. And so we've purchased the back part of that property and are asking to rezone it all. Like the Cumberland neighborhood, we would expand our neighborhood by 24 additional homes. And that's what we are requesting the rezoning for. It will also enable us to put in a pickleball court, all the old folks like to play pickleball, and a, a dog park. It gives us some additional room for, to expand our amenities, too. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? All right, thank you very much. Anyone else who'd like to speak in regards to this item? There's no one else speaking. Motion from council to close the public hearing.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. I understand we have, just back to council for vote. Yes, we have three, three steps here, correct. Three items.
And can we get the, they don't have it, so can we get it back up on the screen?
It's coming.
The next one, Charlie. The, the next slide, please, sir. Thank you. So you have your statement of consistency. This is the, the one that typically has the four bullet points, and it's missing the bullet points, but it's the same.
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we, we approve this as stated, the suggested statement of consistency on the screen here.
All right.
I'll second that.
We have a motion is second, any for discussion? No discussion, ready to vote? All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you.
Okay, and then the next step would be to approve or deny the MAP amendment? Make the motion that we approve the MAP amendment.
Second.
We have a motion is second, any for discussion? There being no discussion, ready to vote? All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you.
Motion to approve the land use plan, Mayor.
We have a motion is second, any for discussion? All right, ready to vote? All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you very much. That's, that's done. Moving on to item number four, it was tabled till the April meeting. So conduct a public hearing, case Z2422, so that's, will be on our April agenda. We'll now move on to presentation of petitions requests. Number one, consider approving the new benefits plan rate for the City of Concord's fiscal year '24.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Chantel, and Dominique from Gallagher. I presented this item to council on Tuesday evening and took some questions from council, so tonight we'd ask that you approve, as recommended by Chantel, Dominique, on Tuesday for the fiscal year '24, starting July 1, 2023.
Thank you. Is there a motion from council?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Ready to vote? All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you very much. Item number two, consider authorizing city manager negotiating and executing contract, addendum number two with Talbot Bright and Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dirk went over this item with council on Tuesday evening. This is a contract addendum with Talbot Bright and Allentown for the design services of the fuel farm, and the amount as listed in the agenda, $38,079.
Thank you. Is there a motion from council?
Move to approve, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second. Ready to vote? All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you. Item number three, consider awarding a bid of $5,945,075 and 10 cents for electric.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since you stated the amount, I will not repeat it, but it is for that amount, the construction of the 100 KV transmission line. Alex did present this item to council on Tuesday evening, so we'd ask you to allow us to move forward with the low bid to power grid services.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion from council?
So moved.
So moved, Mayor.
We have a motion and, James, you can be second. Yeah, there you go. Council ready to vote? All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you very much. All right, let's see, we have the last one here, is consider abandoning a construction easement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sue discussed this item with council on Tuesday evening, and we no longer need the construction easement. We do think there was some issues with the way it was worded, a temporary construction easement. The temporary was not in there, so we need to abandon the construction easement on this property.
Thank you very much. Is there a recommendation from council?
So moved.
We have a motion is second, ready to vote? All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you very much. That's a rare day that we have four items, that, I'm not complaining. All right, consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion is second, all in favor, raise your hand. Thank you. Moving to matters not on the agenda, we'll start off talking about TAC. Anything to add?
TAC did not meet. We will meet this month, week after next.
Okay, the MTC, I have nothing to add there. Central Atlanta Regional Council. Concord County Transit Commission.
Meeting coming out the 20th, 23rd, 24th?
23rd.
This month.
We're meeting on the 20th, 23rd. We'll also add our second, second work session. We'll be discussing some of the items with that. As, as the county, the chair of the county commission's glad to hear that, that we can discuss it so we can start working together on this. Water Sewer Authority of Cabarrus County.
No new report. You guys saw the, the photos, the email that I sent out, and just keeping you updated. Everything's on schedule.
Thank you so much for sending those out. That's, that's very powerful. We Build Concord, Dr. Brown.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll try to make this quick so I don't ruin the party. First thing I want to just update you on really quick is that we had our first advisory council meeting on March 2. And the importance of this is that this council actually is made up of cross-sector partners, but they also help determine a lot of what we do as an organization. It's the way for us to have community input from residents and partners. So to give you some of those agencies that participate, we have Atrium Health, Cabarrus County Education Foundation, Rest Care Agency Works, Cabarrus Chamber of Commerce, Ryan Cabarrus Community College, Upper Room Outreach, Families First Cabarrus County, Cooperative Christian Ministries, City of Concord Planning and Development, City of Concord Transportation, Habitat for Humanity of Cabarrus, United Way of Central Carolinas, Logan Community Association, Keller Williams Realty, Phantom Realty, and Six Resonance. We're actually speaking to some other entities about joining this council, and we got a lot of positive feedback from it, because it allowed them to actually tell us what were some of their needs, some of their thoughts, but more important, giving us a critique of what we were currently doing and how that actually helps the city with affordable housing. Some other key developments, Lincoln Street Townhome Project. The update there is that there's another civil review, hopefully the final one. So we're now estimating official groundbreaking in April, May. This will be about 14 months of construction following that groundbreaking. We have seven single-family developments. One is actually just been completed, and there will be six more. You'll be invited to some open houses for those. And we estimate that all seven will be complete by July 2023. As a matter of fact, this most recent one started construction groundbreaking in January, and we completed actually the first week of March. So with that type of schedule, it can definitely help. On 20 Swink, there'll be a single-family home. On 327 Howerton, another single-family home. On 13 Powder and 94 Chestnut, you're going to have two townhomes side by side. Reason that we did that is that originally those are going to be single lots. But the issue is with sewer and some issues with us trying to create some density, we went ahead and made a decision to double any lot that we could to actually add more housing, yet we still wouldn't have to come to you for a sewer allocation. 82 Fenix is, is, is a, it's a beautiful home. I can't wait for you to see that. And we still have two naturally occurring affordable housing projects. So you all familiar with the Currie Church on 114? We're now in the architectural phase, so there are actually architects in there, who are in there today, mapping out what that looks like. We're estimating with those 15 units and some of the entrepreneurial incubator space that after architecture, we're probably looking at a process that can last about 11 months. And we've just begun to have conversation about Corbin Avenue with 11 units for senior housing. We are right now getting ready to engage someone in the architectural phase, so you'll see an RFQ come out for that, for architecture, and then hopefully begin some form of construction in 2025. Out 2025. Other grants, other news is grants. Want to just thank the city for partnering with us. We did actually officially receive word this week that we received a $2 million HUD grant from the Community Project Fund. And so we are moving forward with that to purchase land for land banking as well as for some construction, so we put both of those into the grant. Other developments, Sky Summer Partnership with the 13 townhomes, we've discussed it before. They're actually in the final phase of their loan. I've spoken to the finance agencies on their behalf as well. And immediately after that final approval, we'll go into straight procurement phases to go ahead and get that development going. Board recruits Bernard Felder with the Urban Renaissance Development will be joining our board. Mr. Felder actually has a long history of developing affordable housing throughout the country, particularly in the southeast, so it'll be a good asset for us. And of course, Ms. Della Robinson, who has joined the team here with your housing department, will be joining us as well. So with that, that concludes my report. Do you have any questions?
Thank you so much. Any questions from council?
Are, are all those going to be in the land bank that you mentioned, everything goes into that?
They'll all be in the land bank.
Good, good.
The only thing difference would be Lincoln, where you would have two-thirds in the land bank, or maybe a little over, about 80% in the land bank, and about 20% would be actually open market, because that's going to be a mixed income development.
Patrick, the, the project Sky, that, that's going to be deed restrictions with the profit.
So you'll have four to five of those units will be deed restricted, but they will be mixed in, so you won't know which one is which.
That's a true public-private, where most of them are just private and being sold, and We Build will control. How many? Four, five?
Four to five. We're working that out now. We right now control four, but there's a potential that we'll control five.
Can you repeat the information you shared about the seven single-family units?
Sure. Counsel, Mr. Stocks, I'm assuming you're talking about the locations?
Uh, yes, and the timeline, estimated timeline.
Okay, now, all of these, one is already completed, Fenix. The other, 20 Swink, which is a single-family, and 327 Howerton, estimated to actually be complete in June. 13 Powder and 94 Chestnut, because they are side-by-side townhomes, they have to go through another week process also for approvals first, so we're estimating those in July. So that's the only thing that pushes those back. But they have actually already started to break ground as far as excavation.
And as far as the Currie Street property, did you say 11 months to completion, once things get going?
Once, once we finish the architectural phase, we'll be looking about 11 to 12 months, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Any more questions from council? All right, thank you. That's really a, doing amazing amount of work there.
Is he getting any sleep? Do what?
I said, does he get any sleep?
Uh-huh.
Lot of stuff going on.
It is. Moving on to Public Art Commission. Nothing to add there. Concord County Committee. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, council members, Mayor, Ms. Kolchinsky, Mr. Payne, and Ms. Decent. I have three updates. The first is on the county committee's current work, which is focused on hiring practices. They are reviewing recruiting information and hiring data from both police and HR. And we want to thank Chief Gasek and Chantel and Kim for their continued support. The second subcommittee about that work, hiring practices, will meet on March 14. My second update is on the current vacancies on the committee. There are now three. The co-chairs hope to provide you with recommendations for who can fill those three openings. And then in April, we hope to extend the terms of about six members whose one term, one-year term is ending. And then my third update is on their learning and development, so they do have a budget line dedicated to this. They're planning a book reading and a meeting with a local DEI committee to discuss promising practices to close out the year. That's everything.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else the council would like to talk about?
I actually just want to mention something. I'm sure you all missed me last month when I wasn't here in February, but I was in Chapel Hill and spent the week with 23 other elected officials across the state through the school government. And.
And I caught Patrick, I don't know if he's already left, I caught him when, there he is, when he came in. So as we had breakfast and lunch and dinner and all of these classes together, there were more and more conversations around, oh, you work for Concord? The fire department there, fill in the blank, right? Oh, you work for Concord? And so I, I guess I just want to say, as I'm sitting here, because I actually talked to Dr. Graham when he came in and said, one of the council members from Rocky Mount asked, gosh, y'all have that going on? Like, is there any way, because they're all coming to Concord in April, by the way, for the League of Municipalities Conference, that we could, we're so excited to come to Concord to see all the things you guys are doing. So I'm going to connect him up with Dr. Graham when he's here. So I just, I guess I just want to say that sometimes we get in our own little world, and we see the good that we're doing, but we kind of forget sometimes that when we look at ourselves across the state and other cities, I just want you to know that of the 23 people that are in that room, I was proud to represent Concord. So we're doing some amazing things, and that's because of the staff that works here every day and, you know, the vision that the city has that y'all carry forward. So I just wanted to say thank you because I was proud to be in that room. Thanks.
Good job. Anything else you'd like to share tonight? Well, this is very nice that we've gotten through our agenda and hope everybody has a wonderful weekend. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mayor.
Motion is second. All in favor, raise your hand. Thanks, everyone.